Well, good morning. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, March 28th. We're here in the Senate hearing room. And as always, if you will join me, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a mighty crowd today because I could hear that Pledge of Allegiance, like, really strong. It's a great way to start our day.
I almost thought there was music in the air for a minute, but I'm saving it.
Okay. Janet's probably watching and laughing already, singing a song. We have nobody signed up for public comment this morning. So Commissioner, if you want to go right into the consent calendar?
All right, Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion we approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, under Board of Commissioners, OLCC applications recommended approval, Eastside Vineyards LLC from Silverton and St. Innocent Winery in Jefferson. Business Services, approve a recommendation to adjust the upward pay grade for classification Code 014 Administrative Specialist Detective Section and uphold pay grades for nine classifications, Code 003 Office Specialist, 002 Claims Adjuster, 067 Property Specialist, 072 Evidence Officer, 100 Office Specialist III, 134 Record Specialist, 142 Facility Security Aid, 143 Facility Security Aid II, and 198 Support Services Technician. And in Public Works, receive notice of hearings officers, decision denying conditional use case 18002 Lynn, Clerk's File 5742.
I'll second the motion. It was done in perfection, by the way.
No, there was a miss. But anyway, thank you.
Well, you know my level. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our first and only action item today. Carrie, you're going to kick us off with the, "Consider a proclamation designating the week of April 2nd through the 8th, 2018, as a National Public Health Week in Marion County."
That's where you want it? Yeah, that's where I want it. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I am Carrie Muller, the Administrator for the Health and Human Services Department. Thank you for your consideration to approve this proclamation this morning, designating April 2nd through the 8th as National Public Health Week in Marion County. I wanted just to take a few moments to sort of set some context for the presentation this morning. This time is for us to recognize the contributions public health makes in our community and to highlight some of the important work regarding the health of our community. So, public health, it starts in the home, in our schools, in the workplace, in our neighborhoods, and in our communities. Our health is about taking care of ourselves. It's about eating well and staying active, about not smoking, about getting immunized, and participating in screening tools when recommended. Public health is about access to and use of services that prevent, treat, disease, and influence health. I thought it was, as I was thinking about this this morning, the impact of public health in our nation, in our world, in our community is really significant. And I think just day to day, we've come to expect and recognize, expect healthy behaviors in our community. And it's really the good work of the public health programs like ours that continue to keep that in our focus. So, things like, just to name a few, vaccinations, tobacco use as a health hazard, motor vehicle and bicycle safety, so helmets and seat belts, that's definitely a public health initiative. Workplace safety, occupational health safety, reducing accidents in the workplace, definitely a public health focus. Disease control, water safety, we have environmental health programs within our public health department that help us to ensure that our drinking water is safe. And things like controlling of tuberculosis and sexually transmitted infections. Those, just to highlight the high level of work that we do in our public health department. So I wanted to recognize Susan McLaughlin, our Prevention Coordinator, and on behalf of Marion County Health and Human Services National Public Health Week Committee. Susan?
Thank you, Carrie. Well, she said it all, so she'll let you adjourn. No. Well, this is my second time being here in the last five years to be the one that comes to kind of bring this issue forward to you, so that you're informed what we're doing out there in the community, as well as to recognize the work that not only our public health department does, but across the board, the work of the county. National Public Health Week has been going on more than five years, but we have been participating for that long. And so what you'll see today is, I'm just going to describe the activities that our committee came up with to do in our community. And you'll see some you recognize that have been successful in the past, and then we've added to that. So it does start next week on Monday, and there are topics each day that go forward from there. And I'm going to share a little bit about that with you. So, the topics that are picked are picked by the American Public Health Association as far as the daily themes. And this year, in years past, they've really had very specific themes. This year, they seem to have chosen more pretty generic umbrella terms for things going on in public health, which as a committee member made us excited because it gave us a real larger scope that we could look at, what do we showcase, what do we highlight? So I'll go through some of the specifics there a little bit later in my presentation, but basically each day, Monday through Friday, the activities that we'll be participating in have to do with these general topics: behavioral health, communicable disease, environmental health, injury and violence prevention, and ensuring the right to health for everyone. So here's just a quick description of the activities that we've done. We have a committee of six people. When we started this five years ago, it was the prevention team in rural Marion County that took this on the first year as a way to build our Facebook presence and to build social media. However, this year, we have over, we have extended over the years to include people from across the public health division. And so we have people from behavioral health, immunizations, environmental health, wellness promotion and prevention, and maternal-child health. So we had a much more representative group from within the Health and Human Services Department. So, primary activity today is to encourage all of you to join us in this effort with a proclamation that we can show off and be proud of. We'll be releasing a press release later on this week, again highlighting activities and encouraging participation of the community to understand what public health is beyond just immunizations and restaurant scores, which is usually when I say I work for the health department, that's what they think I do. And I have to say, "Well, there's so much more to what we do." So that's what we're working on. We will be continuing in social media, so most of the activities with our limited staff time and, you know, budget of not much to accomplish this is to really maximize our presence on Facebook during the week in showcasing not only what we're doing internally and at the health department, but what some of our public partners are doing. And we're recognizing some of our partners, both within and externally from the health department itself. We'll be putting our window display behind you all, as we've done in past years, and I'll show you in a slide coming up what those will look like. And then something new this year is we've developed a slideshow, some of the highlights of this in format of a slide that we'll be playing during Public Health Week when people walk into our health buildings. Many of them have a screen, and they'll just be kind of, "Here's the meetings of the day," and between the meetings of the day, perhaps, "This is Public Health Week, Did You Know?" kind of slideshow. So that will be going on this year. And of course, I'm not beyond a little schmoozing. I want to tell you a little bit more about how we're recognizing people who are doing this work this year. In the past, we've just kind of gone out, taken pictures, and said, "Well, shake your hand, you're doing a great job, we're going to, how about a picture on Facebook?" This year, we were a little bit more intentional, and we came up with an actual certificate that we gave out. So I have one for the Board of Commissioners to leave with you today. Yes, you'll proudly hang it somewhere, right? But as we went out into the public and to our partners, recognizing the work they're doing in public health, we gave them this little certificate, took pictures, went to their staff meetings, brought them some treats and things like that. And so they were really honored. There were a couple groups where people were very tearful as we said, "Thank you for the good work that they were doing," and had an opportunity to recognize them in just a slightly more intentional and focused way. So that was really fun, for those of us on the team to each pick a group or two to showcase. And those will be featured on our Facebook. So again, just briefly what you can expect during those days. We have highlights each day. Monday, as was mentioned, is behavioral health, and we're really going to focus in on things around behavioral health and mental well-being, and how that impacts overall health. People who are mentally healthy and have things in order, and they're functioning in a way that's working for them, are in supportive relationships, they're connected with their community and with places of faith, they have good social and emotional life skills going on in their life, they've had an opportunity to learn those along the way, they make choices to live a healthy lifestyle, so perhaps they abstain from alcohol or drug use, which is, I'm a prevention specialist in substance use, so that's a good focus for some of my work, is to help people not abuse those drugs. They have their basic economic needs met, they live within healthy environments, and there's policies all around them that help reduce impact of trauma and support inclusiveness for all. So as we think about that, and those being the blocks of building mental health, then who's doing some of that work? It's really more than just public health, it's a much larger effort. And that's what we want people to kind of get an idea about and start to think about differently. Tuesday will be communicable disease. We have some focus on immunizations. Of course, some of our STI rates in Marion County are pretty high, so we showcase some of the good work that our STI team is doing. But beyond that, we just want people to understand that immunizations are important, that really basic stuff like washing your hands is really important, and to get an idea how taking care of those tiny little things individually, day by day, really impact our community in a really large way down the road. Wednesday is about environmental health. I like this graphic because Carrie kind of mentioned that we've had so many leaps forward in public health, from seat belts to bike helmets to reduction in public smoking and those things, that people start to not understand that we've got a long way to go. So I think it's kind of fun to look back, that this is an environmental look at how the environmental health has improved life for people in the past hundred years or so. And so in the middle column there on that graphic, we have chlorinated drinking water, which has made a huge difference in the lives of people. We pasteurize milk, safe sewage disposal, inspection of food establishments, mosquito control, things like that that we kind of take for granted this day and age really have had a benefit. And over the last, since 1900, our life expectancy has increased by 32 years. So just kind of thinking about stuff that we didn't have before, that we've got now and take for granted, what more could we do to make this a really healthy place to live and work? Injury and violence prevention on Thursday, learning about the effects of injury and violence on our health. So this is things from development and consistent use of personal protective equipment for our fire department or law enforcement, our everyday worker, to things we don't think of again, like technology. Who is that person maintaining the phone lines, making sure they work for that 911 call so that the dispatch is able to very quickly and efficiently connect folks up to the help they need? And we don't typically think of the phone engineer or the IT person maintaining those computer systems as public health, but if we didn't have their work, it would make the rest of our jobs a lot more difficult. And then finally, on Friday, the right to health, advocating for everyone's right to a healthy lifestyle. And this is where I kind of think that we have the most ability to really showcase some work that's being done out in the community. I heard at a meeting I was at about a group that is working to develop a water system up the canyon, that within the next 20 years, there's going to be a great community-wide system that's connecting, that's building community, that's providing economic advantage for that area to people who haven't had those resources and services in the past. And I think that's just a great opportunity. Outside of the public health department as named, we have lots of people in community services, in public works, in the sheriff's office, in police and fire, in our watershed, that are really doing a great deal of this work as well. So it's just an opportunity for us to showcase all of those wonderful workers. And some of them, like I said, we went around to their groups and we took some pictures and showcased the good work that they were doing. So the posters that will be up have a couple of those groups featured. This is what they're going to look like. They're so tiny up there on the PowerPoint, I'm sorry, but they'll be bigger size for you to peruse as you walk back and forth next week. The first is our Youth Crisis Service Team, that is new. And they're providing services for youth and their families who are in crisis at no cost, so that you can call in and talk to them and get advice. They also can come and provide some support within the home or within the school. The second group is all of the public health nurses that work in Salem-Kaiser School District. And our immunization coordinator went out and talked to them a lot, and got them all together and recognized the work they're doing in schools. And they provide just a great link for kids and families in schools. The third lady there works for Water Lab, and she's involved with environmental health, doing quite a bit of water testing for water safety. Omar is in picture four, and he is an electrician, I think it's an electrician. And they wouldn't let us take a picture, but their group is involved with wellness, their group of construction workers. And in the morning before they leave, they do a whole bunch of stretches and getting their bodies ready and warmed up, so that they avoid injury, which, yeah, right? All of us are like, "Oh, gosh." But he also, you know, is really invested in not only doing a great job so that the families he's providing service for are protected from electrical injuries, but he wears his protective gear, he's got his orange jacket on, all examples of public safety. And then finally, the final picture is actually a Marion County employee, and she's utilizing the lactation room that we have available in the Center Street Health Department. And the idea is to make healthy choices easy for people to access, so that it's not, there's less barriers for them to make the choices that are healthy, such as continuing to breastfeed even if you're a mom that's gone back to work. Okay? So that's just a couple of things. The other things you can help us with, if you choose to or would like to, is there's, I think each of you got a copy of the flyer advertising. We'd love to have you join us, personally link up with Facebook, or have your Commissioners' page join us, repost, whatever you would like to do, engage in those activities. And then the last picture is in the Woodburn Office where my desk is. We have some of our staff there, Sally Cook and Diana Rodriguez and Cordelia Hannah. And they are just demonstrating that we've got our flyers in our lobby. And our reader board in the back will have those public health things going all week long. So that's really what I have, to just kind of let you know what's going on next week, and to ask again for your support in declaring next week Public Health Week for Marion County. And if you have any questions, I would love to answer them. Otherwise, I thank you so much for your time, and I'm really happy to have been invited to be here today.
Thank you, Susan, for your presentation. And I'd say you're writing down some things. A couple comments?
Well, I'm generally all in favor, and I don't know whether to bring it up, but I would like you to consider on the transportation planning to remove the climate change thing that you slipped in there. Just put environmental concerns, and I'd be a lot happier.
Environmental concerns?
Yeah. You made it political when you say "climate." And having one person or 20 people not be in the car doesn't matter.
Okay, sure. And these are sort of talking points, talking points that were just sort of cut and pasted from the national agenda.
I know, but overall, I love everything you're doing, so I'd hate to even criticize a little bit.
No worries.
And this is a poster child right next door, and you should be taking pictures of exercise every morning, "Lives Right." Yeah, now, don't show my picture.
Don't worry, I have some addictions that are not healthy.
Oh.
Well, I'm happy to say this is, you know, very fluid, and we'll go back and make sure that that little talking point is not something that we include.
Okay. And this is only somewhat related, but maybe, maybe it's a good time. I had the opportunity to spend the day with Craig Polk, Polk County Commissioner, last week, and he was real happy with the talks cross-jurisdictional that you've been working on. I don't know if you've been involved, Susan, exactly, but he thinks it has a lot of possibilities for opening both counties. He really likes it, so I hope that's your attitude.
Working with him on that, yeah.
On which issue?
The cross-jurisdictional sharing between Polk County and...
Trying to maximize the resources from both counties for the benefit of all. I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, I, you know, in past years, we've been very siloed and separated by the river. And in my own 12 years of being here, I have seen that grow and grow and grow to more collaboration. So, yeah, and at least in my program, we try really hard to collaborate with Polk County.
Susan, I'm looking at the Facebook page, so this will get updated next week? Is that when this will be on the Facebook?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that start posting over the weekend that are like, "Woo-hoo, get ready, Public Health Week is coming." And then the real push will be about 10 posts a day, Monday through Friday. Yes.
Okay. No pictures of the Commissioners on your page.
I would love to take a picture and put it up, if you would like to. We can take a picture of you with the proclamation, whatever makes you happy.
It could be two parts, if you live right, you look like this, if you don't, you can be me. Yeah, I think it could work. It might be a real marketing tool.
I don't know.
All right.
Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve a proclamation that designates the week of April 2nd to 8th, 2018, as National Public Health Week in Marion County, and that we read the proclamation.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion before we take a vote and then read it? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You want to start us off?
I would. Let me see if I can find the beginning here. Oh, I'll do it off the official page. "In the matter of proclaiming the week of April 2nd, 2018, as Public Health Week in Marion County, a proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on March 28th, 2018. Whereas the health of Marion County residents is of utmost importance to the well-being of Marion County as a whole, and whereas Marion County is committed to work toward creating a healthier environment to ensure that all have the opportunity to live fulfilling and meaningful lives regardless of social determinants of health, and whereas Marion County strives to support the health of all citizens by promoting and providing services that are person-centered, person-directed, flexible, and community-inclusive, and..."
Whereas Marion County supports the individual's choice for health, as well as the mental and physical wellness of each individual within Marion County, and whereas Marion County believes good health is a fundamental part of life, and therefore individuals in Marion County should be afforded opportunities to participate in a healthy lifestyle, and whereas Marion County seeks to advance social and policy change so that Marion County citizens and their communities may live the healthiest life they choose now, therefore, it is hereby proclaimed the week of April 28th..." That's not the right date.
Yes, it's April 2nd.
The week of April, there's a typo on there. "It is hereby proclaimed that the week of April 2nd through the 8th, 2018, is Public Health Week in Marion County, dated this day."
It's right on the...
It's right on there, but it was on, okay, I was reading. And you know, sometimes it's just me that reads it backwards.
I'm pretty happy you spotted that, though. Says much good for the future.
All right, well, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
We'll have one of these for them, right?
And would you like a picture? Yes?
Just him.
Just him?
He's the healthy one, I'm serious. We can do that after the meeting, it'll just take us...
Okay.
Most of the time. But my back has been killing me, so I had to lay off. Was this two copies? Christie Gray? Okay. Wow, that was an easy, important stuff, but a quick presentation today.
It's time for this, and it's rather long, I'll get comfortable.
Well, that concludes our normal business, and I think, as the chair's prerogative, I think I delegate the calendar to you today. Can you just refuse me?
I think so.
Okay, all right. I'm waiting. I got an idea here. All right, so later on today, 11:15, we will be at the City of Salem State of the City address, location here at the Convention Center on 200 Commercial Street. Tomorrow, the 29th, 8:30, a one-on-one with Department Head Carrie Muller from our health department. It's good to see you tomorrow, too, Carrie. And then tomorrow at 10 o'clock, a one-on-one with our Department Head Jeff White, and those are both in the Silverton Conference Room here at 555 Court Street Northeast. And then again tomorrow at 1:30, executive session, MCJE Bargaining Pursuit to ORS 192.6602D in the Silverton Conference Room. April 2nd, the day after my birthday, we will be having calendar review at 8:30 in the morning in the Silverton Conference Room. And again on April 2nd at 9 o'clock, management update in the Silverton Conference Room. Again on April 2nd at 11 o'clock, Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting in the Silverton Conference Room. And on Monday, the 2nd, again at 1 o'clock, one-on-one with Department Head Sheriff Jason Again on the 2nd, busy day on the 2nd. That's going to be a long day, Monday. At 2:30, one-on-one with Department Head Troy Gregg, juvenile. And Tuesday, the 3rd of April, work session on solid waste update here in the Silverton Conference Room. And I know why you wanted me to read this. On Tuesday, the 3rd, 11 a.m., one-on-one with Department Head Colleen Kuns-Chafens. And on Tuesday, the 3rd, at 3 p.m., stepping up meeting here in the Commissioners' Board Room, or Ballroom, whichever we want to call it that day. And on the 4th, back here at 9 o'clock on Wednesday, the 4th, for our board session. And on the 4th at noon, the Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luis's Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn. Again on the 4th at 2 o'clock, Sponsors Inc. Meeting, location is Silverton Conference Room on the 5th floor here. And then on the 4th at 5:30, Marion County Fair Board, location in the Commissioners' Board Room or Ballroom.
You didn't mention Easter, it's not on the list.
Oh, okay, so, so Easter Sunday is coming up, right? And it's always a special day, I think, to all of us, well, most of us. And it's really special for me. In 1956, Easter and April Fool's Day fell on the same day, and it hasn't happened since then. And I was born on that day. This is going to be the first time my birthday fell on Easter and April Fool's Day. Well, it's always on April Fool's Day. You knew I was a fool.
I didn't say that, nor could you read that into my eyes, but it is a...
First time it's happening again.
It is a special day.
Yeah.
And partially sunny this year, which is better than some. We have a kind of a special gathering. I don't know how to explain it. We had a surprise this week with two of my children and one nephew, all having babies like at the end of September. So this will be the first getting together.
Easter?
Yeah, the word's finally out. So we've had some pretty fun announcements this week. My son from Boston sent it. We, I just, you know, I don't get things. His 18-month-old's standing there with a shirt saying "Big Sister," and I just can't get it. And Tammy, finally, "Don't you understand?" Oh, now I do. So it's going to be a lot of fun this time. Things are growing.
Yeah.
It's special.
I'm going Saturday up to the zoo with both my grandsons and my daughters. We're going to hang out at the Portland Zoo and have a good time. So I'm hoping the weather's good for Saturday. Looks like it's supposed to be.
Oh, I think Saturday's better.
Yeah, yeah, they're at that age where they just love to go to the zoo, so this will be like the third time I've done that in this last year with them.
I think the hippopotamus left, though. Are you aware of that?
The hippo?
Two of them. And why they would do that, I don't know.
I like, I like the, what are those things called? Rangatangs? Like a big monkey?
We ought to get a zoo here, we never thought about that.
Anything else happen this week?
No, just pretty routine. We're starting, as you've read off, these one-on-ones with Department Heads, and that's really a signal that the budget is starting to be put together, and we meet with them to get individual departments' needs and wishes, so it's an interesting time. We'll take care of a whole bunch of them this week. I don't know, well, we'll learn. I don't know of anything out there that, well, yeah, Carrie's got something for us. We'll let her tell us. I don't want to just disappoint her right here on national television.
I'm still getting used to calling it the Health and Human Services Department. I mean, it's cool. I mean, it's cool. What was I going to say? Oh, the big thing I'm working on, I've got two weeks, it was two weeks from yesterday, is the Oregon Second Chance Tour kickoff here at the Convention Center. As of yesterday, we had 135 registered participants. It's the Governor's Reentry Council that I co-chair with Jean Viev Martin from Dave's Killer Bread Foundation, and this is going to kick off this, bringing employers and people who need a second chance employment together, and I'm pretty excited about that. We have the governor coming to speak, and Collette Peters. And our keynote speaker is a gentleman by the name of Scott Bundnick. And if you Google him, he's the founder of the Recidivism Coalition out of California, but he's also the producer of the Hangover Series. And I have not heard him speak yet, but I hear he's quite the, he's very passionate about reentry and giving people a second chance and corrections work. So, that's going to be exciting. That's on April 10th, and if anybody's out there watching, you can register, you can go to the, it's called thesecondchancetour.com, that website, and you'll find a place you can register to come to that event and hear about how we can break down some of the obstacles that employers think they face in hiring these people that are very loyal. I went to one of the Second Chance Summits that Dave's Killer Bread does up, does around the states, and I went up to Seattle, and one of the things that was amazing was the loyalty that people had, employers towards the employee there, and the employees were given that chance, and people had worked their way up into management. So, it'll be a, be a good day. Excited about all the work that's gone into it.
You know, I'm looking at one of the things, next Tuesday, the work session on solid waste, you've been hearing me talk about as we go around the county, and my concerns and things. We really haven't had an update since the collapse of the recycling markets, so I'm real, real curious if things are changing, or if we have some plans, or can make some plans, and where we're going to go with solid waste. That's a big issue with the county. That's all I got.
All right. I think if there's nothing else, Jane?
Oh, yeah, we haven't even used her knowledge today.
We're awful quiet today.
She was going to interrupt on whether the chair, I saw her working, she was going to say, "You know what? He can do that." You were going to say that, weren't you?
This meeting has been completely legally compliant.
Thank you.
But you were going to say I had the power to delegate the calendar to him, is that what you were going to say?
I was going to stay out of the whole thing.
Oh, okay. With that, we will adjourn.